Is it mandatory to wear a suit?
Nah, you can wear whatever you want.
Alright, good stuff.
Come meet the campaign team. I'm gonna gun them all down. Cause they're using our fucking table.
Oh wait, there are actually people here.
You scary fucking bastard in the back there. Jesus Christ.
Staring out the window?
Yeah, let's stay with him. I don't know, I think he might be in his head, but we'll stay with him. I don't have binoculars on me.
Well then, more fool you.
What are we looking at?
Fuck all.
Yeah, that fuck all gone out there, it's like, jeez.
Yeah, I just watched some twat ride a motorcycle up the steps.
Yeah, it was fucking glorious though, I reckon. Wheelieing the whole time. How else am I supposed to get to my parking space?
I feel very important standing like this. I look like I'm contemplating, uh... Wagyu or whatever that other fucking expensive...
Nova, meeting's at 11 o'clock, yeah?
Yeah, it is, yeah, we're all just packing it to the... You know if you come into the town hall? Remember the room with the big desk?
Uh, yes, to the left, I believe, isn't it?
Yes, that's the room we're gonna go in.
Okay, I'll come back to you there, I've been in, but...
See you soon, see you soon.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna lie, I thought you were a local.
That's what I was saying, I looked at her and I was like, nah, it's not. Creepy bastard.
Well, I came here early because I knew someone was gonna try and get me to do something or... And I'm way too tired to do it.
It's understandable. I, uh...
I feel that.
Do I have confirmed to this? Let's throw in our emails, left, right and centre, we've got, uh... Jay, Hunter, Lexi, Diego, Victor, Bluebane, Charlie. Mac Davies is a maybe. Uh, Rob Banks cannot make it, but I don't know who's gonna take his place, I need to call him in a second and find out. And I've got Hunter/Isaac. I think Isaac is coming as well.
Yep.
So...
Yeah, I spoke to him earlier and he said he was.
That should be, that should cover the whole board of, you know, the different sectors within the city. Um, got a few things to talk about. Say a few, there's a fucking lot. But we'll, uh, we'll get to each one.
Roughly, what percentage was I?
About seventy, mate, to be honest. So, for, what I'm gonna do is, uh, I think the way I'm, I'm just gonna run it, you know, welcome everyone and then I'm gonna ask people, do they want anything to talk about specifically first?
Will there be food?
You know what? There will be, I've got, I've got thirty-two burgers on me, just in preparation for this.
Nice, nice.
They have been in my top up for about three days, but I reckon they're good.
Keeping them good and, good and, uh...
Warm. Warm. Oh, damp, yeah, oh no. Jesus, man, that's grim.
Um, well, the... You can skip the personnel for PD and EMS because I don't know whether that is, should be brought up here at all.
Uh, personnel? What, uh, one sec, what would be... I mean, you can bring it up if you want to, it, it's fully on you, whatever you don't wanna bring up, you don't have to bring up, whatever you do wanna...
I'll just...
You know, it's welcome, so...
I'm just so tired.
Yeah, sorry. The, genuinely, I was trying to, uh... Work this around everyone to try and get, you know, everyone here type of thing, but, um...
Yeah.
It, it's, it's resulted in being quite late, so I, I do apologise and I wanna assure you that it's not gonna be this late in the future and I'm probably gonna do it at the weekend.
Yeah, I... Yesterday, climbed into bed and I was fucking awake until like, 2:00, 2:00 AM.
Yeah.
I thought, oh, well, I have the same fucking thing today. Nah.
That's my bad, that's my bad.
It's alright.
Yeah, it would've been ideal to do it yesterday, but I, uh...
So deep into the night, we should be in an alley wearing trench coats, man.
I just took my trench coat off.
I, uh, you know, some, I just wanna point out, you know, people at these, at this table. You guys can see people, right?
Oh yeah, I'm assuming you were gonna clear them, I mean...
I, I don't think I can do that, uh...
Did, did you not book the room?
I, I tried to, I, I thought I did, maybe Sharon's mixed it up, um... Just, it's just unacceptable really, isn't it, yeah, but, um... You see, see that guy on the, on the back left there? With the, the purple jumper? And that guy with the, the black jumper, I think they're twins, um, they look strikingly similar.
They're vests Nova.
Someone's, one sec, no, they're fucking people! Hello? Who's walking about? There you go. Back down! Oh god, back down, back down, back down, back down. This way!
What, what's wrong?
Well, we're using the meeting room, it's audio.
Where?
Uh, just, it's, it's, welcome to town hall, fella!
I've never been here before!
This is where my office is, believe it or not, we're gonna use this door on the left here.
Sounds good, sounds good.
It's got a table, I've gotta, uh, point out that some of my support staff are here, they're, um... They're very nice people, they're very quiet, um... But you know, it fills up the room a bit, so...
Oh shit, okay. Couldn't get with them?
I, I don't know how to...
Steve here in the corner said he's gonna take notes, so...
Yeah. Now GF is just...
Fuck, this is annoying as fuck!
Move!
Oh no, they can't get up! I didn't know they could get up. Try not to knock them out, that'll look bad in pictures. Kinda like that. Rough the door!
No, but there's a, there's a open, uh, table over here.
Is there? Is there two meeting rooms? This is the courtroom?
He wants to fight.
We, we can use this if you'd like.
Wait, no, different door, there's some, somewhere.
Uh, I think there's office, oh no, the next one's a toilet, on the left, um...
Over here.
I can just hear the locals screaming at them. This is also a, uh...
Oh, wait, what? What door was it?
Uh...
Yeah, I've had a look for, because I was told there was one with a round table, I've had a look, I not been able to find it.
Nah, I don't think that... Was that a gunshot?
I wouldn't be surprised, they, they've got them all rolled up. They're upset because they've booked the room and, you know...
I, I mean, if they've attacked first, it's self-defence, you know? I mean...
I mean, Charlie, you attacked first.
I, I didn't see that, to be, I was looking the other way, so... That's hard to meet, not us.
Hi, why are people getting beaten up?
Ah...
Babe! Babe, stop beating...
Oh no!
What are you doing?
Don't be funny!
Who the fuck?
You know what, if anything, it makes my support staff look very committed when they're sleeping at work.
What are these, uh, other doors here?
That's why there's no taxes.
Let's take a drive, I'll say we take a drive on the block and we come back.
I...
Alright babe.
I really don't think that'd work, but now I'm down.
I'm very happy that you didn't paint the Range Rover black again.
Oh, let's see!
I was probably expecting to wake up and it be black.
Left the white, they're talking to you real quick.
Oh yeah, sure, what's up?
Kinda get a chat with my missus for two seconds, honestly.
We said dressed up. Not dressed down.
Yeah. I asked Nova, should I be wearing a suit for this and he said, nah, you could wear whatever you want, so, uh, yeah.
I mean, for future meetings, we'll, uh, we'll make it a little bit more of a formal event, but this is really definitely not thrown together at the last minute because, uh... Someone's been fucking requesting it for the last two days, um... But yeah, no.
Yeah, he totally didn't request it for the last two days because he's been getting bugged by someone else.
Line of command, I like it, I like it. That's fine, I, uh, I'll be a lot more prepared for the next one, I promise.
I mean, I see, see this one is a bit of like a, bit of an emergency, or, not emergency, but a bit of like a, yeah, yeah.
In fact, then, yeah, I...
Um...
I'm not sure I'm gonna run it yet either, um... We'll see.
I mean, I just sort of, I don't know.
We're gonna be here for three hours, getting through...
Nah, fuck three hours.
Uh, seventy percent of the things, but then, you know, we're onto the really easy stuff. After that, it's fine.
Oh, I just keep, you think it's gonna get solved in one meeting?
Yeah, no way, no way.
Oh, you doubt my efficiency, it's fine.
Have we got a replacement for our PD?
Uh, we have not, I've just tried to call him, but the ball cunt won't answer, um... If anyone else wants to try and call Rob Banks, uh, beat my ass. I also spoke to another officer before that I didn't get the name off. But, uh, I think they're tied up in other things at the minute.
Yeah, I mean, I I specifically went off duty just so I didn't get any calls.
I lost his number.
That's so sad. Is someone else getting punched in there?
I figured out, it's only fucking asking, actually.
Oh no, it's just the poor soul stuck against the desk in his chair.
I mean, I think if we take a drive around the block, we should be alright.
Yeah, I'm done.
You say that, then there'll just be different ones there.
That's better than being knocked out, isn't it, or...
Okay.
Steve seems to be leaking a lot of jam there, so...
I mean, uh, we could, we could use your fucking office, really.
I mean, there's, there's only two seats.
Is there not, is there not another room that you can use?
Nah, we can use the court, the court part of it.
There is one in here.
I'm pretty sure we've all just gone try, it's fine, the same one.
Yeah, no, it's, it's alright, let's let it, just let it look, it's fine.
It's fine, hopefully if we just go to this side of the, uh, thing. The maid will come and clear them up.
We can take a second to one of these offices on the side.
Might as well just mine upstairs. It's a bit bigger.
I mean...
People are gonna have to sit on the floor though.
Yeah, just sit here.
Oh, I was debated.
We can go to the other one with the actual, like, herring thing, so the chairs are facing the front or something, I don't know.
There is a person, you remember PD here?
Let's check the other one, onwards!
Where's PD?
Ah, that's Nova Room, ah!
What, you mean, you mean this one here?
Yeah. Go in the bathroom if you want, Charlie, I don't really mind, like...
Oh yeah.
Use this one. Wait, is there, does the door open? Fucking damn doors, being glued to, fuck you De Luca, you bastard!
I mean, you could have, I don't know, like, do you want people that, hmm, this was a little bit like you're on Trolle, isn't it?
Not yet! Can I sit in this chair? Uh...
Hi, Selin!
Hello!
Hi Nova, where are you?
Uh, town hall, we're just, uh, trying to find a suitable meeting room since half of my support staff have been knocked out or killed.
Nice, I'm on my way anyway.
Yeah, nah, you're all good, you've got time.
I know I'm five minutes late, so I do apologise.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's really, it's, it's taken a while, we're trying to find a place to sit, we're trying to find a replacement for PD at the minute, but the ball cunt, Rob Banks, will fucking answer his phone, uh...
He's been a dickhead.
Oh yeah, I, I, I don't know why that would be, maybe it was the message I sent to him earlier?
Nah, he's just a fucking nonce, mate, he's probably nonce-ing. Probably nonce-ing himself in the mirror or something.
Bastard, you hate to see it, you really do.
I don't, I love it!
We'll be in the lobby, we'll see you in a minute.
Yeah, man.
Take your time, bye-bye!
I, I said to you, I'll supply your party free of charge, whatever you want. And I'll also...
There you go!
So if you've got money, I'll pay you with it.
Hi!
Okay, I'm currently in the meeting right now, so I think, but I'll sort out a few afterwards, okay?
We're not, we're not in a meeting yet, mate.
Thank you very much, bye-bye.
City business, we haven't started the meeting yet, so it's...
Babe, he's in the house, by the way.
Uh, no babe.
Uh, it sounds like it's sick. He's on the guest bedroom and my office, yeah, it's class.
Babe, I did your office.
No, you didn't. Sitting on mine in Thomas's room. Oh, Thomas now, Thomas has now bought a house, you know, so, uh...
Yeah, okay.
Nah, it's not moving.
No, city council with no PD.
Great. Stop moaning, you fuck!
A PD is available to my knowledge.
Yeah, that's what I'm guessing, they are, they have been tied up when I went down before, they were dealing with a bank robbery, so if they have to miss out on this one, I can just you know, give them the... I know they've been...
Send them a little fax and be like, yeah, this is happening now.
Deal with it, you were there to say no.
Yeah, right?
Is, is blood around, is blood coming at all?
He's going, he's in the door there.
Wait, why would blood be here?
Fucking that blood god, honestly, I just can't stand it, he's just riding on his mo, on his bicycle, like, in some fucking, in his red shit fucking backpack.
Out of the way, love, out of the way, come on, out of the way. I'm just, I'm gonna stand right here.
Now everyone starts beating the shit out of him!
That's my arse, I'm a Jay.
Blood in, blood out, let's get it!
Right, come into my office upstairs, all of ya, there's two seats, you'll have to sit in each other's laps.
Your off, your office is...
I choose Isaac's!
No, I, I get, I...
No, hey, can we use this office instead, please? This one's better. Nah?
It's the bathroom.
Chairs, chairs for everyone! Yeah! Think there's, nah, there actually is a chair.
This is gonna be a long fucking sitting meeting.
Why don't you use the other room over there, no, is that not better, or?
Charlie, shut up!
I mean, blood, blood, you should all sit down then.
It's an actual waiting room, like...
You guys are gonna sit on the, who's sitting on the floor?
I mean... I, I'm, I'm sitting in the, I'm sitting in the chair beyond the desk.
What's your fucking that? This is my chair. It still won't move because it's glued to the floor.
Come on, you slow fuckers!
Can I have a lift, uh, fuck, I'm meeting in the lift!
You'd be that one edgy dude by the window, hold on.
There you go.
Please don't sit on my keyboard again, last time you fucked my computer.
Nope!
Jade, the timing!
You're gonna sit on the floor, Diego.
There's gonna be a murder.
I mean, to be fair, there are some sofas in the corner.
Go sit on it then, motherfucker! Stop being negative!
Jesus, he's...
He didn't even say anything!
Jesus, gross.
Yeah.
Isaac, sit down, you fucking animal!
Yeah, god, sit down, Isaac, jeez!
Fucking hell!
Twat!
Right, so... Do I hit count? Uh, Mac Davies was a maybe, I don't think he's turning up, and...
Mac, I spoke to Mac, he said he's not been, he's not prepared for the meeting, so he's not coming.
That's, that's fair enough, uh...
I mean, I'm not prepared, I'm still here.
Basically means he's...
I'm not even prepared as well, let's get it! Um, yeah, nah, it's fine, he can come to the next one, it's fine. Uh, Rob Banks was supposed to represent PD, but obviously that's not gonna happen, uh, we'll just have to fill him in what happens. But everyone else, oh no, Victor isn't here.
Oh, I can call Victor.
Yeah, alright, yeah, cool.
I think we should all do it at the same time, as...
Yeah, we should, you're right. Bastards in a phone call, what the fuck?
Answer my fucking phone. Uh, yeah, no, he did not answer.
Try and give me drunk Charlie! Yo!
Hello? Oh, I hear voices.
Thank you.
Someone's trying to call Victor.
Hey, where did you get?
Two seconds.
Hello?
I hear voices! I've called out to the bo, ah, ah, ah! Ow! Hello?
Hello?
Welcome, welcome to the community meeting.
Sorry, I was just late.
City council meeting, really? Come on, carry upstairs, let's go.
I was asleep, I'm sorry.
That's perfectly fine, you don't even have to be awake for this, you can lie down on the couch. I'm not gonna walk you through these doors, I'm not sure what'll happen, so... Okay, you're gonna have to walk through here with me. I'll never take my shoes off. Steve's made it, boys, if you wanna lie down on the couch, you can.
Oh, look at the fucking light bulbs, yeah?
Did you say Charlie, Rob Banks wanted to?
Alright, I'll fucking do it!
I'll try and call...
You're laying on the floor scratching his ass.
That's where it belongs, you fucking swine!
You fucking dog.
Nova, what are you doing, get this going?
I'm trying to call Victor!
Fuck Victor, he's probably doing something, who cares?
I can't think of what'd be more important than this, you know?
Yeah, what does he run?
What do you run, shut the fuck up?
A restaurant, you dick!
Sorry, lattes!
Fucking Nancy over here. Never seen you sell a fucking latte in my life.
Yeah, sold five hundred tar and gum as well.
Did you?
Yeah, yeah, because he can dish out to his officers, so they all stop using drugs.
Wait.
Wrong way, man.
Drugs are bad.
Because I'm trying to, I'm trying to uncorrupt, decorrupt the police department by giving them coffee.
Because it makes me money, I don't care about health.
Caffeine's a drug?
Why not just sell drugs, surely that'd be better?
Because this is a legal drug and it makes me money!
It was weed, but, hell...
It means I'm paying taxes, shut the fuck up as well, you stupid clown bitch!
Wait, are you paying taxes?
Yes, I am. You carry on talking, Isaac, and I'm gonna pull your fucking throat out for your arse.
Please.
Jesus Christ!
Use me like a puppet, please.
Like Kermit.
Guys, city council, guys, city council!
Yeah, this boat... Right, is everyone geared up and ready to go to Vangelico, yeah?
Yep, alright, cool.
Perfect!
I wanna hit, uh, phone store, get, uh, maybe.
What are you gonna say then? Nothing!
Can we get started, then?
Uh, yeah, I, I guess so, the people who aren't here are just pricks, I guess.
Relevant, they're pricks.
Yeah, fuck those guys, um, yeah. Everyone, uh, welcome to the first meeting, I have not planned this whatsoever, so I'm basically just gonna put it out to you guys to bring up things that you wanna bring up and we'll talk about them.
Alright, uh, let's go around robbing Charlie first, I reckon.
Yeah.
Oh, what, no, give me last, please. I mean, what, we just give out ideas, what we think at the moment, or?
Yeah, basically just what you wanna bring up and what you wanna talk about.
Okay, um... So the first thing, the, the first thing I think is that there's a few too many people that have too many jobs in the city at the moment. And I think with the city getting more populated, they can be shared out a bit more evenly and have other people sort of getting involved, you know?
I agree.
Okay, yeah, no, I agree with that, yeah?
So like, I think, like, for instance, not to name any names, but I think we know who, like, the green carpets are. Some people that are EMS, that are PDM, that are Redline, that are fucking uh, everything, you know, and it, and it's I think it's taking a spot out from other people that with the city getting busier. Like, I get when the city was quieter, like, it made sense because people were around, but I think with it getting busier, you know, it could be a good chance for people to actually get in and sort of build some stuff, you know?
I can, I can agree with that, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, so I, 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 if it was me, I'd limit it to maybe one or two, like, four times jobs, for instance, you know?
Okay.
This will actually open up the city with, uh, um... Growth and stuff like that, people will start making ends meet more. People will have dedication to their jobs instead of having the same six people in the same six jobs.
Absolutely.
I think maybe tapping our MFM off two jobs two jobs for, to people, that's fine.
Yeah.
Because then it gives a chance for PD and EMS, uh, because our jobs can get very boring and we wanna break something, then it still allows us a chance to go do something else, but without robbing it from anyone else, you know?
Yep.
You agree, I mean, I, I...
The other exception I would say would be what I'm calling part-time jobs, so for example, a VU dancer.
Yeah.
It is open once a week or once every two weeks, so that to me, doesn't seem fair to have that count towards the one of two jobs sort of thing.
Yeah, definitely. I'm a manager there, that's cool.
I'm just gonna go look how many jobs I currently have.
Let's look at how many. That was literally governor and, uh, vanilla unicorn management.
Be honest, I think three is good, two part-times and one full-time.
Nope.
I mean, I, 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 I think two is, I think two is good.
I think two is more than enough.
The city's now, uh, you know, legally allowed to hold more people as well, like, the population limit's gone up and whatnot, and you, you, you know, as, as these, as these houses and that get filled up, people are gonna need jobs when they fly in, aren't they, so...
True.
Yeah, 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 if, if everyone here has fucking three jobs each, ain't gonna be nothing left for anyone else.
I don't know, if, if you have three jobs, you can't give your devotion to one job, like, I mean, so you're doing one job half-assed and it's, it's...
So even now, it's a third arse.
Yeah, literally, I, I'm chit-maps, alright, calm down.
Do we all motion that uh, two jobs per person?
Motion of...
I'd say two jobs with, agreed upon with like, part-time jobs as, uh...
Yeah.
Mr Bradford said.
Yeah, I agree.
VU dancer.
So that's...
Yeah, especially because...
Bar ten for an evening at VU as a favour, I mean, that, that's your, that's anti...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Especially because even VU not, because you have the VU job, doesn't mean that you'd be available on that Friday at 8:00 PM when it opens.
There needs to be a, 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 a further restriction as well to make sure that for example, somebody wouldn't be chief of EMS and real estate CEO, you know what I mean, because that's a bit too, too much, you know what I mean? Like, you could be one or the other of those and then have a, an employee job, not an employer, like, not, you can't be the employer of two things, that's a bit too much.
Would that apply to me too, since I'm part owner of...
Fucking right, because you have a fucking job!
No, he's CEO.
And if you're, if you're a business owner, you shouldn't be a business owner of two things.
Uh, yeah, absolutely agree. Absolutely agree.
Choose one business and then work somewhere else.
The nice thing is, gonna have to buy me out, yeah.
Well, yeah, what, did he not already?
Best buds. Hunter owns luxury and best buds.
Do you even get enough business to warrant two owners there anyway? And that's not meant to be shitty, so I apologize for the way that sounds, it's just a genuine, like...
No, it's just, um, the whole, the whole thing was created.
Yeah, yeah, of course, yeah.
I had the idea, Isaac wanted in. I let him in. Isaac took over the place. I still have the, you know, the money into the place.
Yeah, yeah, of course. Yeah, I mean, shit like that could be easily sorted, go on, yeah.
I mean, I, I don't think we should, should, we need to, we need to veer away from the money that was put in and look to the city's future and like, think that money's money, finally get that, but if you can give someone else a chance to create something more and like, have fun with it, that should take proper, like, you know?
Yeah, because I mean, like, like, I mean, like, like, you're, you're gonna make the money back, yeah. It's not hard to come up with a city like this right now. You, you know, the economy's fucking booming right now, isn't it? Is he okay behind me? Because he's just squirming.
He's tired, he's very tired.
What the fuck?
Not a long day.
Yeah, it's not a long day.
Latte, blood, give your thing.
No, because if I give him one, I'm gonna fucking throw at him. Jesus.
Probably fucking wake him up, dog.
Maybe. Victor's not answering his phone, I've rang him like forty-five times.
I don't know, leave him to it, leave him to it, he's probably busy.
I don't give a shit.
He said he had like five meetings, so.
Oh, not tomorrow, but this is.
He's had his fair share.
Alright, so this is on the topic of jobs, um, salaries.
Fuck off, I was gonna bring that up, you cunt.
Well, first come, first served. Um.
You talked about your shitty business.
Yeah, at least I have a functioning business.
I, I do.
Yeah, okay, two customers, um.
That's about more than a vineyard.
You can count, god damn.
It'd be robbed of his business shit, so.
We're not gonna go down the route of your business, Isaac, because I reckon I'll make you walk out of this room crying, but you carry on talking.
Heck, yeah.
So glad everyone could make it.
What's your salaries?
They need to be balanced.
Does definitely need to be balanced. I'm, as an owner, I'm only making two hundred dollars.
Oh.
But who else is an owner?
For, uh, me.
No, they don't.
Uh, I get five hundred.
Right here too.
A lot, a lot of the jobs, a lot of the jobs currently.
Three owners here make five hundred and I make two hundred as an owner.
Respect, Isaac, we have a bigger business than you have, with respect, it's a lot more active.
Selling weed.
But then you've also, you've also got to remember that, when, so when, when we say that, right, so, uh, and, and again, let's, let's say with respect, you own Redline.
Yeah.
Uh, what, do you get five hundred?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But then you, you're, you're, you probably make more commission than what he would sell in little joints compared to what you do, still making cars.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, yeah.
So that's, that's why we need to, it needs to be looked into, y, 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 you know, uh.
Also have to regulate shit.
But there is, there is a lot of jobs that fluctuate, uh, like, I believe for me at my coffee shop, it is two seventy-five as the owner, he gets two hundred, you get five hundred, and there's a couple of jobs out there that are three hundred. It doesn't look like it's been actually, there, there's no, there's no, uh, there's, there's no thought process, it's just, here's a number, chuck it in, kind of thing.
Yes, on, on, on that, on that point, Isaac, how much was best buds to buy out of interest?
Uh, everything was three hundred and, yeah, three hundred.
Okay, so when you, when you bear in mind, our businesses cost a lot more than that, or not a lot more, but they did cost more than that, you know what I mean? So that, that's kind of a thing, and with respect as well, like, like me and Diego, our jobs are our full-time.
It's about space, I have a small space, that's why.
It's not about space, it's like, I was saying about me, I don't do anything but Redline. Like, I'm, I'm, I'm.
You've got to admit, like, you've got EMS, like, how much do you get from EMS?
Exactly, yeah, exactly, yeah. There's a balance to be struck, but.
Because I don't, don't some EMS get paid upwards of like nearly eight hundred dollars per?
If you're a chief.
My paycheck as chief is eight fifty.
And how much do you get for helping a patient?
I get two fifty.
How much do you get, Isaac, on your EMS salary?
Six twenty-five.
You cheeky fuck. But this is where, this is where we need, we, uh, we need a couple of people.
Yeah, I mean.
But the thing is, what if you have someone that doesn't, who isn't EMS and is still doing two hundred an hour?
But that, and that's what I'm saying, so that, that's where a couple of people need to sit down and go through the paperwork and actually properly balance it. Because like, like I say now, here's a number, chuck it in, that's what they've done, they've just filled out a piece of paper, they haven't actually got a thought behind it.
Right, so, so, so.
We need, we need to do what you're saying, like.
So if you're speaking, I own the vineyard, right, on paper, my salary is a hundred and fifty dollars.
How, how much did that vineyard cost you?
Uh, V two costs two and a half mil.
Fucking ripped off.
B three, I haven't paid anything for it because I'd use my deal one to, yeah, mate, tell me about it, bro.
Ripped off. I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what, I'll buy it off you for a hundred grand.
Mate, I'll give it to you for free if you're gonna actually dissect with it.
I'll take it off you.
If you can do something with it.
Yeah, let's shift over, I, 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 I tell you what, I'll give you fifty grand, I'll tell you.
I've actually got a chat, no, I've got a chat lined up with someone, so, uh.
Alright, well, fuck you too then. I, I just offered you money for it.
But, 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 but that's what I'm saying, like, like, you own that big vineyard property that does nothing.
Yeah.
Like, I've literally done one delivery through that and I, I made sixty grand off that and I think I paid three grand to employees.
Yeah, we need to start planting some grapes up there, you know what I mean?
Been saying that for the past fucking year, mate.
I, 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 I know, uh, yeah, yeah.
I know what you're putting down, yeah.
Diego, can I ask how much you make, uh, salary from fucking PDM?
We just covered that.
Shit turns.
Five hundred? Yeah, we just covered that. Are you listening? Actually, bigger question real quick, is Slaphead listening?
I know, because he's, yeah.
I am listening.
Dickhead.
Hi, Rob.
I mean, it, it, I, I think it does make sense for there to be salary gaps, with, with active businesses that are open all the time.
Give me all the money.
Paid more, and the fact that we don't, so if I upgrade a car, I will put it through one of my employees, so like, I will try and push it towards them as much as I can.
Yep.
So, yeah, yeah, because it makes sense, I mean, like, so you, you pay for money, do you know what I mean? So I think with me and Diego, I started, I think a pretty fair personally. We paid a lot for businesses.
I'll let my suppliers only make two hundred dollars and then other ten K on one grand of weed, and that's one day's worth of work.
Alright, but you can be on EMS, why you've got our employees working?
So I can embezzle money into best buds, okay.
I'm not about, I'm not about you.
Why are you getting sassy?
Yeah.
I don't think it'd be embezzled.
I mean, what, what, what I'm saying is, I, I think, the, the fair point is, Isaac, you make a fair salary through EMS, which is fair, because you know you're high ranking, whatever you call it. I, so best buds is kind of your part-time job, right? That's kind of what you do for fun, you know what I mean?
Best buds more than I am on EMS.
I mean, so that, that, that's your, that's your choice.
Which one you wanna become, man?
But then, do you, do you, would you, would you then say it's fair if I said, if your best buds more than EMS, we switch the salaries and give you fuck all from EMS, because you're not doing anything there? Because you're clearly doing more.
Or I'll just step down.
Well, you do whatever you want.
This is a community meeting, not a council meeting.
You're half asleep.
Isaac's life, let's, can we move on?
No.
I, I, I think it's fair to say that, that salaries are, do you balance, I, I, I agree, and there's people in here that obviously are a little bit annoyed that salaries are different.
Yeah, I think owner's salary should be raised because at the end of the day, they did pay and buy for the business, but at some point they need to make that money back.
Yeah, and that, that's what I'm saying, like, a couple of us can sit down and look through the paperwork.
Otherwise, the business is not a profit.
Yeah, but a, a couple of us can look through the paperwork and balance it out properly, but, you know.
Who's the, who's on EMS?
Oh, it's probably me.
Oh, no, I think it's Thomas, I saw Thomas.
No, it's not, I'm, I'm downstairs.
Who the fuck is that? And where the fuck is she coming from?
I don't know.
Oi.
What the fuck?
What are you doing, ghost lady? Piss off. Fucking Casper, I'm about to beat the shit out of you. Well, throw some plasma hands at your arse.
Wait, where, yeah, who is on duty right now?
Thomas's?
No, it's not.
I saw him down at Redline before.
Not anymore.
Anyways, moving on.
Yeah, no, I think we agree that we need, uh, they need, the salaries need to be looked at and, uh, registered accordingly.
Yeah, so, so, so far we've got jobs need to be limited, salaries need to be adjusted, right?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
Is there anything I wanna bring up, Charlie?
My second thing from a mechanic point of view, and I was about to pick something about this as well, is that the Ben, oh, sorry, not Bennys, but the local garage prices need to be raised because we literally can't compete with.
I agree. Great, now, I, I can, I can elaborate on that a little bit, uh.
I wasn't finished, but, yeah, please crack on.
Oh, no, 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 I'm just telling you, I can elaborate. No, no, you crack on.
No, no, go, 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 go.
No, no, by.
No, by all means.
Charlie, just go.
I tested.
I was just saying that, but, so, so, another thing with Bennys, they still have a local plate in there, and I was literally there the other night and three guys came in, used local plate, were fucked off, didn't even talk to anyone, so you need to get rid of that, because that, that's horrible, like, like.
We're not removing it, it's meant to be there for when there's no mechanics around, but we were talking about, if you let me finish my conversation.
I mean, I was kind of talking, I was kind of fucking talking anyways.
Should we have, should we all have a stick and anyone who's holding the stick can speak?
We've already had talks of the mechanic plates are gonna be more for people who've got, say, Bennys, said over mechanic shops to repair the cars when there's mechanics around.
Have we had talks in, in the meeting with guys for that or just between you, you guys?
No, like, they're doing, dealing with it as.
I don't know, I don't know.
Uh, I don't know.
I believed, uh, Rob, that's the talk of Teddy at the moment.
What the fuck are you doing? Get, oi, City Hall now, get to City Hall now, fucking come up, governor's office, right now, you're in trouble now.
But I think making the prices of Bennys higher would encourage people to buy your repair kits more as well.
I believe.
For when you guys aren't about, you know?
So, 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 what me and Pix spoke about is that what we think should happen is, if there's a mechanic on duty, the prices get quadrupled. So the local prices get, get, get quadrupled what they are now. If there's a mechanic on duty, they get doubled. So like, if, for instance, you're in Polito and you don't wanna drive all the way down to get a repair at half price, you can repair it at a cost, which is kind of fair enough, you're paying more for the location kind of things because of the convenience, but if you're in the city, you know, and, and you're around, you, you come to one of us, you get your car repaired cheaper.
Yeah, you, yeah, I mean, I, I, yeah, the city, city businesses are a little bit behind on, uh, the, on the, on, compared to the economy, aren't they? You know, like, houses are still cheap, fucking vehicle shit's still cheap. It is, uh, it is something that needs to be, uh, sorted.
Wait. Cheaper for me to go see Redline than it is to go to a local garage?
No, it doesn't, no.
Not really, no.
It is, it's, like, yes, it's cheaper to go and, uh, self-service at Bennys than it would be to actually see Charlie for some things at the moment.
Okay, okay.
So, so like, the, the, the point, like, you got, you got to remember, and, and it's, it's based, based on a fact as opposed to an opinion, it's, it's, uh, you, you know, originally, the, we all know the economy was fucked, so prices and, uh, everything plummeted. Uh, house costs went down, you know, car upgrades and repairs and all this shit went down. It's, it's, all this is a little bit behind from what the economy's, uh, current standing is. Now that the, uh, people are moving in, you know, the economy's booming again, then that just needs to be caught up, but it's something that, uh, like, like I said before, it's just another piece of paper on a pile, it, it, that, it can all be sorted in, you, you, you know, over an evening. Just shifting a few numbers about and it can all be done. Uh, I, I, I agree with Charlie. If, if, if your mechanics are around, then you should have to pay, at the very minimum, they should double the cost, at the very, very least, double it, you know what I mean?
I mean, you're support, you're supporting, like, your friends and shit like that, our mechanics and stuff, I'd rather do that.
Mate, you're, you're interacting with people.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah, that's, yeah. And that, that's the point, you know, you're, you're giving your money to a, to a business, not to a fucking scroungy little local.
I think you should even have the prices like that for when you guys aren't around, it would encourage you guys to make more business on, um, toolboxes and stuff like that.
Hmm, that's true.
It's true, you have a package, yes, true.
Just have, it, it, it's also less work for the construction people because then they'd have to program it so that it would be times three when you guys aren't on duty and different prices when you guys are.
Does that take long to do?
Uh, and not a construction worker, but I would presume it would be more difficult than just making it a price.
Uh, hey. Got a question on regards of EMS and businesses.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Um, since we sell pain medication, or painkillers and bandages, are we, do we need a business license and do we need to pay taxes?
Isaac, I'm gonna punch you.
Is EMS, I wanted to find out whether hospitals pay taxes.
Bringing taxes into.
No, 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 because the, the, the hospitals paid for by using taxes.
Yeah.
In reality, you should be paying the hospital, you fuck. I do, I pay my taxes. There you go then.
You should just get in money for it.
You're a special needs person.
Jesus Christ.
Hunter, thank you for your input, mate, honestly, it's a very, it was a very serious meeting, we just got in touch with the economy, let's go, special needs person then, fucking hell.
Diverse, Steve boys, it's what it's all about.
Tax cut if I hire someone who's like special needs.
How do you fuck, why would you fucking ask that?
It's a very important question.
Not an important question, it's a stupid question.
So, do I get a tax bracket or what not?
It's Sharon.
If I'm Philly Jim, I should be getting a fucking tax rebate of two hundred grand a month.
Oh, yeah, but I'm the bad guy for bringing it up.
We have to deal with him all the time. You can have six hours of him.
Basically a fucking charity right now.
To be fair, I thought that I'd hate ever spending two minutes with him, but he's actually alright.
When, when, when Philly, when, when, when he gets, when, once you get to know him, he's lovely, he is fucking lovely. When you don't know him, he's an absolute cunt.
Yeah, I, I can confirm against that, yes.
Um, okay.
Wait, I'm not, I was like, I was like, God, you fucking say half a, you prick, I'm not fucking saying.
How much, how much is taxes?
Four million, that's a very broad, oh, well.
Who the fuck said you could come in, you fuck?
Finally, you're only about thirty-two minutes late.
I, I got a serious question, Victor, how many missed calls do you get from me?
Um, I don't know, seventeen?
Who are you fucking?
Um, my head, that's what I was doing. How we doing, everybody?
Well, I mean, you're only thirty-two minutes too late, Victor.
To, to bring you up to speed, uh, you little fucking, whatever you are.
Bull decided to chip in and buy you a Z type.
You have, we have, but you were late too, not getting enough, and we're gonna fucking hit you with it, no, um, so, we, we, we discussed. We, we discussed, uh, we're, we're gonna see if a couple of people, uh, from the city council can look through the paperwork and, uh, sort out job salaries and, uh, balance them a little bit better.
Okay, that's good.
We, we, we've, uh, mu- mutually agreed, uh, that, uh, now that the city's population has, uh, skyrocketed recently, people shouldn't be holding down three, four, five, six jobs at a time, limited to two, but you shouldn't be owning two businesses, like, like, for example, if you're, if you chief of EMS, you shouldn't also be the owner of Redline kind of thing, you know?
Hundred percent, you got, you got priorities straight.
Own, own one, be an employee of the other.
Employment app not limit you to three anyway?
No, no, but that is, um, I, I can, yeah, that, that's, that's, uh, being looked into already.
Okay.
Um, to limit it down to two, uh, properly.
Especially, especially with the city population picking up, uh, you're gonna be very busy with whatever your main focus is.
Exactly.
I mean, just skyrocket.
But we, we want people to be able to have the opportunity to do what they want, and if, let's say, just the people in this room alone, if we all had three, four or five jobs, there wouldn't be anything left for anyone else.
True that.
You, you, you know, and then you think there's still forty fucking seven other people out there running around, so, you know? But yeah, that's, that's, uh, what was the other thing? Uh.
Mechanic shops.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, so, yeah, when, when there's a mechanic about the city, so like.
Rusty here?
No. Does he have, what, what's he gonna be here for?
Uh, he runs the radio and he's a music pro.
Has he got, has he got his business license already?
Yeah, he got it yesterday.
Oh, man.
I didn't think we'd mail him, to be honest.
But I mean, there's no point in being here if he's not on the city council.
He's not, yeah, he's not, yeah, I'm gonna offer him a place for the, for the next, um, yeah.
As almost he doesn't leak any information, I mean, he is news.
Can I just make, ma- make a suggestion and can we all sort of vote on the city council people had been added after us, you know, like, or like, just sort of take a bit of advice and, you know?
It's a good shout, yeah. I, I, I tell you what, I'll set, I'll set up a, uh, a, a, a chain email, uh, for ourselves.
I don't, that's actually another thing I was gonna say, I've actually got two more things I wanna say, actually, when you're.
I mean, real, real quick, actually, if you, if you, if you all send me an email, so I know, so I've got all your emails saved, I'll, I'll set us up in the, an email chain, uh, if you catch my drift and get all that sorted, so we know who's who. But yeah, literally, everyone could just send me, uh, an email, that'd be amazing. Um, yeah, la- last thing, real quickly, uh, Victor, we said, like, when there's mechanics in town, so when you've got, uh, people like, uh, Diego at, uh, Bennys, uh, and Pixel and that, and then you've got Charlie at Redline, we, we wanna try and get it sorted so that the, uh, the cost of going to a self-service, uh, auto shop will be, uh, at the very minimum doubled. Uh, to, it's, it's a bit of a, uh, to put it very plainly, it'd be like, uh, kind of like, why the fuck aren't you going to see the real geezer about it, you know what I mean, like?
And you're going to other places, yeah.
Yeah, he, he's right there. He's, he's the man who can sort you out. Don't go see a local twat.
Hundred percent, that's, that's good. Uh, now that the city's picking up, a hundred percent needs a change, because, uh, previous, when the business isn't there to be run, it's very difficult, so especially now, I'd say it's a good time.
Yeah, I fucks with it. Yeah, but that, that pretty much brings you up to speed on what you missed anyway.
Okay.
What else did you wanna mention, Charlie?
Um, so I was gonna mention that, I did discord yard that we have, where we're all involved in, maybe even the other one that we have from the other thing, you know, maybe not make a, make a sort of council sort of thing from it.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to say.
Yeah, uh, and also as well, I.
Slow down, Charlie.
Thanks, thanks. Um, but also I think it's all like, the cat, that, the, 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 the city should meet us and know, know we are the council.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
I think like, so after this meeting, what I, what I would suggest is that we have a big meeting with everyone at the courtroom, whatever you call it. We'll go through what we've discussed, what we're going to change, this is your council, this is, this is who they are, so if there's an issue and, and they was not around, you can come to one of us, you know? So like, if it's, if it's, like, come, or mechanic based, come to me, if it's EMS based, come to Lexi, buying cars to Diego, I mean, you have, you know who these people are, you know? So, so we're, we're not up there with such all of us, but we are here, if, you know what I mean, I think that makes sense, I think.
Yeah.
Agreed. I fucks with it.
I completely blanked out from all of that, baby.
Charlie, you're great, Charlie, you're on a fucking roll.
Basically what I'm saying is that I think everyone should meet us and know, know we are the council, so that if they have an issue, they can come to one of, one of us, you know?
Oh, yeah.
They can basically speak to us about the matters that they, uh.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
Problems or suggestions, stuff like that.
Because I'm not, I'm not, not, not if I might.
And that is kind of our job as city council, to gather information and bring it back to meetings, feedback.
With Nova, I'm the governor, then we could all do a little bit of a chat and say what we, what we do in the city, what we're about, you know, like, what we've changed, that kind of thing.
I mean, Nova hasn't really had a launch party yet.
That's what I'm saying, that could, that could be a good launch, of the governor, the council.
Wait, who's Nova?
I might be fucking clown.
I heard it's just an idea.
That's right.
Lexi, babe, calm down.
Salt?
Someone says they need security?
Oh, no.
Is that why you're here?
Oh, God.
No.
I'll just say you're a brownie.
Oh, yeah, apart from Nutcris, I wanna say that that's all I've got to say, buddy.
Whoa, 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 anyone else? Anyone else with a really big mouth?
I have a question about the, the council in, in general, uh, as to who gets to be actually in it, you know? Say you have a record for murdering seven people, are you allowed to do this?
I mean, I, I'm more focused, at the minute. Who is that?
Jesus.
At the minute.
We're, we're, we're within these four walls, we're all innocent, don't worry about it.
Yeah, at the minute, I'm focused purely upon the sectors, uh, of business, uh, so like, I've got everyone from each sector.
For DUI, I'm like, I'm in the city council, you better release me this instant.
Yeah, I mean. I'm not sure that'd work, to be honest.
Not a city, they fucking, I'm gonna kill you for being in the council. But yeah, apart from Nutcris, I'm done, I think Jay, you got some stuff to say, or?
I'll go fuck in the luggage.
Is someone here? I am hearing voices.
Just go check that side.
Someone is checking on our council meeting.
Taser, 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 taser.
That's all, God. That's all, god.
Hello? Ah, there's two people there. Afternoon, fellas.
One second, I'll try and renew you, one second.
Ah, he, he ignored me.
Hello, everyone.
I'm about to rain on these bodies.
You're right, fellas.
Hello.
Hi there. Council, welcome.
Yeah, man of the people.
Welcome to the city, how can I help you?
How we doing, everybody?
Oh, my god.
Say that again.
Goodbye.
No, I did.
He vibing, hell yeah.
Yeah.
To get jobs?
Hey, mate, how how old are you, bro?
Jesus. Right, how old are you? Huh? Say again? No, I didn't hear you.
You're not talking.
Ting.
Fifteen?
Ting.
You have to, you have.
You 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 have to hold, you have to hold your voice box down.
Learn your voice box a little more before you talk.
He's running.
Don't run away.
No, we're, we're here to help you.
I'm sorry, I'm so excited to say anything, cause I can't stop laughing.
Bye.
Jesus Christ, we're trying to help you, hey?
I think, what's he saying, nine?
How old are you, mate?
Teen.
Ting.
Fifteen? Yeah, I'm as- I'm assuming, uh.
You fifteen?
Yeah, mate.
Yeah, I'm fifteen.
Saying thirteen.
Big yikes.
This is so weird.
Big yikes.
See you later.
He sounds so sweet.
Bye.
Uh, actually, no, Isaac. Uh, Isaac.
Eat them fuckers.
One, one, nine. Thank you.
That's awful as well. Fucking twenty to twelve, this is fucking bedtime, mate. He's a fucking bedtime story.
He sounds so sweet and innocent and adorable, this doesn't ruin him.
Is that red? Why's your pistol red?
Don't ask.
Hey, why is your pistol red? What gun is that, bro?
He sounds so sweet.
That heavy?
Are you gonna red?
Why you got a heavy pistol?
It's standard, I can, I'm allowed to carry it as my rank in PD.
Are you allowed to with an extended clip?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Well, well, banks, is it, is it legal, this heavy pistol, is it legal or not?
If you don't have a, if you have a criminal record, then yeah.
Off he goes.
If you don't have a suppression on it.
Uh, suppressors are legal?
He has a suppressor on, yeah, suppressors are.
Oh, my god.
No, Victor, it's not. Send my, all my equipment.
Yeah.
It's not legal to carry.
What, what if he promises to tap fire up?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Spare to tap anyway.
I mean, he's not wrong. I've never shot the gun before, so I don't know.
It's a sick fucking gun, uh, this one, isn't it?
Yeah, it is, where'd you get it?
It's just a normal heavy, it's just got a skin on it.
But how, how do you get a skin?
To be in the know-how, motherfucker.
Get it in a case?
Uh, I see.
Yeah, 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 I got it in a case, I also got, I also got a knife with it.
Come on, fellas, we got all, we ain't got all day, come on, guys, what are we doing, let's get back to the meeting.
Yeah, let's go upstairs, oh, it's so sad, I think I'm gonna cry, it's like having to shoot a puppy.
It was really easy to shoot the puppy the other day, to be fair, so. I mean, I've got a clip of that, you know, it was so good.
Put it downstairs.
Oh, that's so sad, bless him, bless his little cotton socks.
You say cotton socks?
Yeah, cotton socks, bless his little cotton socks.
I've never heard of it.
Being ninety years old and fucking.
So fucking bad man, Charlie.
That's so sad.
I'm half asleep.
Midnight, yesterday, oh, when I woke up.
Good night?
Huh?
You ever lie down on the couch, Mr. Banks, don't mind, don't jump out the window, it's not worth it, it's not worth it.
I was just seeing if I could.
Sadly, you can't, I tried.
Oh. Is he, is he just dancing with him to try and connect to this child?
Yeah.
Sounds like he's about to start crying.
Taking a picture?
He's being so sweet, I have to go back.
Jesus Christ.
I tried, but I couldn't.
You wanna take the shot with that fancy pistol you got?
Frickin' puppy down, all right, just leave it, leave it be.
Just, just give, just give me the call, just give me the call.
Take the shot.
Just let me know, just let me know when.
Put him in the body bag, do you ever?
Oh, my god.
Can I have a cupcake, Nova?
Course you can, fella.
No, no smoking in his room, I have, uh, I have asthma.
This is my room, nah, fuck off, my roommate, the windows are sealed, so, good luck at home.
Shut up. Shut your frickin' mouth, I'm gonna throw it at that frickin' window, don't say anything ever again, right?
Me, can't, you can't open them, they're fucking sealed.
The window.
What?
Please don't.
Balance off the window.
All right, all right.
It's a load of this, uh, things in this building, they're just glued shut, like my chair, the windows, some doors.
Nova, what's all these, uh, little red markers here?
Uh, I place down a mark every time I kill a bloke, um.
Are they buried at these locations?
Oh, no, it's just where I killed them, they're, they're all, they're all buried up there.
I thought they were all the starships.
Oil fields.
Yeah, something like that, mate, somewhere like that, sure, 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 sure.
Why, why only in the city, why?
Fucking no one out in Sandy, yeah.
That one left off, he's fucking murdered them all.
Kill them down there and then move them to Sandy and Polito.
There's no way to track those frickin' hicks, I mean.
Yeah, you see, you see right here, the dogs, in this lake here, that's a, that's a good place to put a body.
For new HIV outbreaks.
Wait, guys, guys, what is that, is that, oh, no, it's just Redline, don't worry. Turn it off, hell, yeah.
It's a very detailed map, pretty.
Oh, I made it by hand, it's all paper mache.
Why'd you just take the Bennys over there? I didn't know why.
So I peed on it.
I had probably ruined it completely.
Took your phone out and zoom in, it's actually very detailed.
Actually.
I was gonna call off Christmas, that's sad.
Is it, fuck, shut the hell up?
It's like you're really, really far away.
No, but it's like when, you know, yeah, when you don't see it from a distance, you must. About every building here.
Wait, baby, he's not here.
I see PDM, oh, yeah.
No, I like to pray, uh, play pretend with the sport.
It looks like someone's like, just smeared paint everywhere.
Just fucking said, dude.
No, no clap, no, 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 we don't clap for that. I mean, they're, they're still up, they're still operating, I mean, fuck.
Where the?
What are they, if you went to these buildings?
You got a white button on your shoulder, like Buzz Lightyear, hold on.
Excuse me? Hey, who you, are you touching me?
Oh shit, I didn't mean to do that.
Provocatively.
We still got.
Nice, that's why we're all the drugs here.
I haven't put this away since the rest earlier.
You just touched me?
I don't know, probably console meeting, I guess, no.
Come on in, boys.
Interrupted by a seven-year-old.
Oh, yeah.
All right, sixteen of them coming in.
Diego, can you call me real quick, please?
Oh, my god, big man.
Thanks, buddy.
Bye, little child.
All right, all right, I'm just busting your balls, come on, take it easy, I see you sweating, Jesus Christ.
Sorry, you can stay.
Why is the people downstairs, there's people coming to the, there's people breaching the building, let's get them. Hello? Can I help you, can I help you, fine gentleman?
Yeah?
Then you're not invited.
Sorry to see you.
You're not invited to the city council meeting.
Going on at the minute upstairs.
You're not invited, it's an important meeting.
Not important enough, eh?
Nope, you're all shitbags.
Can I speak to you for a second?
I hate you, Pixel. Yes, how can I help you?
Come here.
Very forceful.
Upstairs?
Uh, my office. I'll, uh, I'll invite you up at some point. Preferably when we finish the meeting.
Missed a clown, you ready to go upstairs?
What, sorry?
Give me, give me a tour.
Can't, can't do that at the minute, there's a, uh, city council meeting.
Yeah, but let's just scab him off.
Can't do that.
Aye.
I'm the governor, mate, why are you barricading my door? What? Second. Eh.
Who the hell is calling me?
Eh.
Nova, what were you flexing on?
She's just, uh, seeing to, uh, walk up there. Can you?
Oh, no.
I was gonna say, I can't jump that.
Who placed this there?
Who did this?
Beautiful form on that world.
Who's the fucking dick that did this?
I don't know. Whose voice did I just hear?
Uh, yeah, there was Pixel, just a.
No, I just heard someone be like, oh, did you have a meeting about this, you do?
Oh, oh my god, oh, yeah, there's the, the guy in the green jacket over there, I think.
Oh. Oh, wow.
Oh, oh my god, I just want to have a meeting.
He's, he's, this is.
A civil heaping in my office, it's not so much to ask.
See how quickly Pixel just got tilted there.
Yeah. I did taste him about two seconds ago and he was walking away.
Fucking problem, I should have fucking married.
What's going on, lads?
Why are you getting mouthy for, what's your problem?
Cause there's no need for the extra thing, is it?
Literally what thing?
I walked all the way down there and I was coming up to move the barrier.
Right, and what?
And then you're like that, leave us alone, like, I was literally coming to move it and then I'm leaving.
But you put it there in the first place.
But you're fucking, what the fuck, though?
First place.
Oh, my gosh, man. Power gets to some people's heads, it's crazy.
Mate, what are you talking about, power, mate, what are you talking about, I'm trying to help us all, mate, what are you doing?
I was coming up to move a fucking barrier, Charlie.
I get that, I get that.
Extra fucking statement.
What, we're trying to fuck have a meeting here?
Come on, just kiss and make.
Okay, and now I'm leaving, and now I'm leaving, I don't wanna continue this conversation.
Had an argument for it. Oh, Pix, man.
Charlie, listen.
Listen, mate, I, 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 no, 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 me and Pix, stop, stop. Me and Pix are good, me and Pix are good, yes, mate, go on.
You can go in the bush.
On Pix, come on, come on, Pix.
You can go in the bush.
Nah, but what I'm saying is, there was no need for that extra thing, I was coming up to move a barrier that someone asked me to move.
You guys, this is.
Can we have our meeting?
Yeah, let's, let's.
Can we please have, let's just go upstairs, please?
Let's go upstairs and leave him, if, if he gets, let's shoot out the window and let's hold the fort if it gets to it, bulletproof. Rob, we need your authorization to hold it down.
Yeah, you are, it's like.
Uh, I've got some on me, actually.
I feel absolutely terrible at the minute, I feel as though I'm bleeding every so often, Isaac, can you help me, please?
I've got some.
You bastard.
I've also got some acid on me.
I've got some crack.
Uh, will any of that help me stop bleeding?
I've got crack, I've got ecstasy, I've got an eye fuck, I can give you an eye fuck.
Um, Victor, there's no smoking inside, mate.
Uh, I got a, I got a card for it.
Uh, will you have to show me?
A card for normal tobacco cigarettes. I wanna, I wanna point out, you don't need one of those, you know, you're getting ripped off.
Yeah, I gotta.
I'm in a meeting.
You paying your fucking taxes? Hello?
Come here, love.
Shit, he's dead on the sofa, that is Count, whatever his name is.
Did you say Count, Count?
Thank you.
It's blood, too.
Right, I'm fucking bored. We don't really have anything else to cover.
Oh, I think, I think Jay, Mr. Jay Radford over there does.
Yeah, I still have like ten points.
Yeah.
Fuck off, mate, you're taking up my time, that's my time. Let's have enough of me.
Alright, can we crack on now, though, cause I do have other things waiting for me.
Alright, let's get on.
Charlie's outside as well.
Go on, go on, go, go, go.
I'm very hungry.
Um. PD DOJ laws, so from what I heard weeks and weeks ago, is that the MDT. Uh, didn't have the laws in, I'm assuming they might have them in now. But even so, the DOJ laws and the MD two, and the PD laws do not match.
There was somebody working on it previously, to my knowledge, but she's, uh.
Yep, I was working on it with her, but we tried, I mean, at least she tried to get a copy of the MDT laws so we can compare. And as far as I know, we got nowhere.
The whole MDT changed as well.
Was that, I'm sorry?
Whole MDT changed as well, so it's kinda hard to keep track of everything at the moment.
Yeah, exactly, which is why I, I, I wanna copy of both and then I can compare, see what the changes are and then bringing them back to somewhere like here. And say, okay, these are the differences, which version are we keeping?
You able to help with that, Rob?
Uh, yeah, I can.
We can, we can sort that at some point, that's great.
I think we'd need to do that soon, though.
Yeah, very much, I'd be like, near top of the list, cause it's very much doable.
Yeah.
Compared to some of the other things.
What else you got, Jay?
Is that your name, Jay, was it Ray?
Jay.
Jay, is there anything else?
Uh, yeah, so, uh, IA.
What's IA?
Internal affairs, PD. Now, previously Gloria was put in charge of it, of course, she's no longer around.
Yeah.
There needs to be an IA department, I'm, I've heard things, I've had people come to me with complaints that should be dealt with internally.
Yeah. I know a guy who might be, uh, interested in it, actually, uh, he's, he's, uh, yeah, I, I know a guy, I know a guy. I see, I could, I could, I could go see a man about, don't, don't worry.
God, I don't like that.
No, I'm dead serious, he, he's straight as an arrow, he is. You know? Yeah, of course you'd giggle at that, crap.
Uh, okay, moving on to the next point then, this is just a personal preference of mine. I want, I would like to change the laws to treat red lights like stop signs.
Oh, so you have to stop and, uh, you can't turn right?
Everyone just treats red lights like green lights anyway, so why not?
But, I mean, cause.
But there are some traffic lights that don't have the light for the right turn, there are some that do, but what would you do for those traffic lights?
Well, I just meant you stop at it and if it's safe to go, you go.
No cop, no stop, hell, yeah.
Just, just, uh, a giveaway, so.
Don't stop, you're an absolute menace.
I mean, I mean, it's just a case of you give way to, could, could you just make it like you give way to the right, basically? Easy.
Yeah, can do that.
Can do that. There's not a lot of local traffic anyway, is there, so, you know, as long as people are, uh, stopping in, like yielding when necessary. I, I, I see it as feasible.
Yeah, I mean, as Rob said, people, I just, I come up to a stoplight and people are just going past it at a hundred and twenty miles an hour.
I can't remember the last time I stopped at a red, I'm not gonna lie to you. I always stop at reds.
Fuck the red light, hashtag fuck the red light.
Uh, if you get the, uh, the MDT laws, you can probably write that in and then we can come to some sort of agreement as a group, um, along with any of the ones that you wanna. You know, uh, change, add in, et cetera, et cetera.
Cool, okay, will do, uh, I've got three points, but I'm, I'm gonna just merge them all into one and just call it personnel. So I had PD personnel, EMS personnel and DOJ personnel, um, with the increased popular, uh, population now. Do these departments have enough people? I know DOJ does not.
EMS doesn't.
Need to start hiring them.
Uh, PD's on its way.
He put advertisements.
Yeah, we put, we put up advertisements and talks to people in city, um.
It's just a waiting game, isn't it?
Be emailed people to see if they're interested in coming and having their jobs back after telling us.[1562.74]
There's no smoking in here. I told Victor off for that. Put it out. It's illegal, it's literally illegal.
I've applied for both, but due to the.
I've just thrown it on the floor.
Littering, that's too, Rob, get him now, quick, seize, attack. You're not a.
Alright, red light runner. Alright, calm it down, now use it, use it there.
Watch it.
Are you, are you watching, Rob, bud?
Yeah, stop flaring at my office, boys.
Whoa, whoa, he's got a gun.
So.
Anyway, fuck that boy. That's a step up, isn't it?
Yeah.
Escalated quickly.
So, the question would be is, how do we get people involved, interested and stuff like that?
Completely honest. Um, EMS is draining as hell. I don't know what PD is like. Um, I have not been on duty for a solid four days in, in relaxing.
I'm guilty too.
Um, I feel bad for Thomas for being on duty, but I've done my three weeks on duty, yeah.
What about that Brittany chick? Do I heard, uh, Phil was saying some Brittany chick came back?
Uh, she did, saw her for ten minutes, maybe a couple hours and haven't seen her again.
She still hasn't been back yet.
I mean, don't take, don't take that as fucking fact though, she might just be doing short shifts.
He's done this twice now.
What I would like to request is, I don't know if you can do this, but I believe PD have an on duty, off duty channel where they can see who's come on duty. We don't have that as EMS. We've asked multiple times for the hours this week since December and we haven't got anything either. Uh, in emails.
Oh, I agree.
Um, do you have an on duty, off duty thing like PD does?
Yeah, that's what I just said.
Can you fucking wake him up?
What is, what is? Not an on duty channel.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, like, that's what we don't have.
Walk into and they can check in and out of duty.
Yeah, we have that, but we don't.
Uh, it's.
It's not recorded anywhere.
We don't, it's not recorded. We don't have, we can't see records for it and, um, Andy used to give us the hours about how much hours people are putting in, but we don't see that either.
Yeah.
We've asked for it like five times now and.
I personally have asked for it too.
Yeah, we just don't get it.
That's probably definitely something that's doable, without doubt.
I mean, the motivation was there when we got lower pillbox as well. A couple of people flew back in, but then they flew back out again and it just motivates the people who are willing to be there.
Yeah.
So that's an issue. We've, we've tried doing like, um, EMS of the week in the past and out of the money in Joey's pocket. We pay for their bonuses and stuff, but that, I mean, right now we're just giving the bonus to the same two people, cause it's just the same two people who fly in.
Like, there's a great pop, like, pillbox is not that busy. It can be busy, but it's not that busy. Depends on the day and time, what's going on.
It, it's, it's usually either one extreme. It's either completely dead or it's just chaos and stress.
It's not steady. I don't wanna sit around six hours and not have one patient. Rather go do something else.
I mean, would city become more popular? Would that, would that be changing, do you reckon, or?
No.
I mean, I think you'll see a lot more people.
I think we will see a lot more people.
I mean, I've seen a lot of gangs run recently that are clapping each other, you know, so like.
The, the thing that's stressful as well is when they're in like gang wars as well and all we get is gunshot wound after gunshot wound after gunshot wound. It is also very stressful.
Talk to the cop, to the patient.
Well, may, maybe, maybe just be corrupt then. Stop telling the fucking police.
Have to, it's, it's what she and Thomas wanted.
Yeah.
You only say that because she's here or?
I'm, I'm, I'm not, obviously everyone has a job to do. Please have a job to do. You guys have a job to do. But the amount of threats we get about being sued for stuff when we're just trying to help people is ridiculous.
There's no lawyers, don't worry, you're safe.
Uh, yeah, but I mean, there's Jay.
Why the hell are you getting sued? What are you getting sued for?
Exactly. What are we getting sued for? Either we didn't do this right, we didn't do that right.
I got an infection, I lost a toe, blah, blah, blah.
Just taste them and walk away. There's a lot of off balance people then.
Um, but yeah, no, it's just.
Uh, I think they, they don't realise that we pay for things out of our own pocket in EMS and, um.
Do you not have a government fund for like lawyers?
No, we don't have a government fund.
This is what, I literally spoke to Thomas earlier, uh, and he can't put me on retainer at the moment because he doesn't have a government fund.
Yeah, the same goes for PD as well. Like, they get threats all the time about getting sued, but neither PD nor EMS have government funding for things like this that happen.
Why isn't anyone?
And everyone just is under the impression, oh, EMS and PD, they're government things. Yeah, we're government things, but we still pay for our lawsuits and our lawyers out of our pocket.
You should be emailing me, asking me about government funds and stuff then.
Typically, both PD and EMS would be covered under a DA, but we don't have a DA.
You don't have a figurative DA?
No, I mean, there's literally two lawyers in the city.
So I'm saying a figurative DA.
I'm an actual idiot, what the fuck is a GA?
A district attorney.
Ah.
Sorry.
Ow, Victor.
Victor, please, come tell me.
Yeah, no, I, I do know.
I'm just helping out the EMS business, alright?
I'm so sorry that you gave my husband a wedding present and not me.
Clock up.
Um.
Wait.
Talking to me or talking to Victor?
Both of you.
Uh, so, yeah, um, Governor, do you have like money for your suicide just in case you get sued?
Nah, I'm just rich, mate. Yeah, he's rich as fuck, don't worry.
Yeah, yeah, it's true.
Cause, cause he just went logging all day.
Yeah, did you? I can't fuck all of that, man. But no, that's, uh, that's definitely something that could be sorted, a, uh, a government fund.
You on duty?
Where the fu, oh, you're by the window.
Uh, I shouldn't be on duty, why?
I'm looking.
I feel a bit fucked.
What, for a government fund for PD and EMS? Say, what's up, hello?
I'm not paycheck farming.
If you're on duty, then I'm gonna go on duty.
I said I'm not paycheck farming, I'm just melon.
Fucking potato.
Yeah, you're fresh melon.
What are you doing, bud?
Making sure no one's nicking my car. Saw some green underglow out there. A lot of cars, but I don't know, it's all. Yeah, and I don't want someone nicking my car.
No reason at all.
Sorry, mate. I was making sure my car wasn't getting robbed, you fucking lawyer. You got any other points to bring up, Jay?
Well, continuing on that with the DOJ.
I mean, Nova only has a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
I want more judges.
Want more judges?
I think that's great.
You got two.
We have two judges. We've had a lawyer waiting for a week to get his bar card. I've had a court case on the docket for a week. It took them four to five days to sign a subpoena. We, we need either more judges or.
Um, I think judges are not the only one who can give out bar cards. Uh, I can give out a bar card.
How can you do that as chief of EMS?
Uh, no, not me.
I should be able to give a bar card.
I'm saying like there are different ways to get bar cards. Like, he can have it emailed to him. Is that better, bud?
Yes, it is. I, I, I know that, but there's an application that a judge has to view.
Has it been viewed?
Not by a judge.
Yes, we do need.
Well, then you perhaps lock in emails and send email after email and in a spam formation. Yep, that, that'll do it.
Right, you're all witness that I've just been told.
There is, there is a car outside.
Yes.
With green underglow. If you don't see it.
Fucking these motherfuckers.
Kobe's car on earlier.
Wait.
It's grey.
What's he doing? Don't let him touch my car, you fucking baldy. Uh.
There's Kobe, yeah, there's Kobe.
Carrying on from that.
I didn't interrupt, but, uh, you know, I don't know what the hell he's doing.
Um, yeah, so if we can somehow get some more judges, that would be great.
Uh, yeah. I mean, they just need to step up and actually look at these applications once in a while.
Yep, I have emailed them before.
Judges don't have to be around all that often. They just have to fly in for court cases. Um, so we don't really need more judges. Like you said, I think what we're really struggling for right now is lawyers. People need more options. Uh, for example, there's obviously, well, you and who?
Bijan Battle Drinks, who's only been on duty twice. We've got that Oliver Reddington, who used to be a lawyer.
No, no, no.
No, I will, no.
Everyone's.
Don't get me started on that thing.
What's on AR?
He fucking started going to my business and singing around and shit you.
Okay.
Isaac, will you go away, please?
He, he hangs out with, uh, those gang bangers all the time.
CGF?
Yep.
Oh shit, okay.
Don't, don't tell him a secret. Everyone else will know about it.
He hangs out with the gangs all the time, already.
I was, uh, about to say the other day.
Are everyone's a no one that? Yeah, okay.
With the way he's not the Philly.
Well, I'm, I don't think anyone's gonna hire that, um, banner sheet guy. No offence to him.
Batter ship.
No, no, no.
Yeah. Uh, he was outside the galaxy the other day just screaming. Not just that, that's a bit, that's a bit, um, racist, but, uh, no.
Just can't pronounce it.
It depends the way he conducts himself. It's not very professional and I for one would not want someone at that representing me in a court case.
Yeah, well, I mean, part of the issue is at the moment is there is no steps of getting a lawyer in and actually doing a bar license, a bar exam or anything like that.
Yeah, well, maybe meet them first.
Yeah, well, yeah. Um, it is something that I, is on my very long list of things to do in the DOJ, but I, I'm one guy, it's, it's taken a while.
Yeah, no, I understand what DOJ is. Very difficult thing to do. It doesn't take just any bozo.
Yeah.
That's what I'm talking about.
Uh, cool, and my last point is business plans. Nova.
Oh Christ, yeah, um, I've had a couple. Nah, they're all, they're all in the process. I have, uh, I'm involved in real estate to have a look at them with me and I'm gonna sit down with them in the next few days, I would hope, and we're gonna just, yeah, you see that, yeah. Um, gonna go through them one by one and tick or cross, whether they're doable, not doable, and then I'll work with the actual, uh, people who put in the business plans to either, you know, alter them to get them to do something else maybe that might suit them, or to just, you know, bin it off altogether and just have them do whatever they want. You know, normal jobs wise.
So, my question to you, and this is more of a personal question.
Okay.
Uh, there have been people who can put a business plan in and have a new business license in under a week and yet there are some, uh, business plans that you've had for a month and a half?
Yeah, uh, that is purely down to the actual business itself and how easily implemented certain things can be. Um, for example, like, can't think of one, like a Redline, for example, was, uh, you know, a, a business that was already there and, um, it had just been, you know, the previous owners had left it. So, if Charlie, Charlie came along and said he wanted it, it was basically just a case of saying, yeah, this is the loan that you'll have for the actual property. Here's a business license.
And, and, and I got it for free, right?
Yeah, of course you did.
Hell yeah, like everyone gets it for free.
Yeah, um.
Did you?
No, he didn't. But yeah, no, he could go into that property and then start his business that way, so it's a lot easier for him, whereas, um, uh, think of another one, like, um, our, our best friend, Oliver, Oliver Reddington. Oh yeah, Benny's, there you go, Benny's a better one. Um, that, that was there, but the facilities weren't readily available, let's say, uh, straight away, and that's been in the process for you know, like a week or something, I think. I don't think it's been that long. Um.
My business is still not there.
But yeah, no.
Victor, it took me half a year to get the fucking thing out of working, mate, so be patient, please.
It's all, it's all just patience with, uh, construction workers coming in and doing the work that they have to do and things like that.
Especially they have to take consideration. It's pretty much just one construction worker right now, um, and he is not a robot. He's, he's a person.
I, I say this to people who come in with the, the plans and stuff like that. It might take a while for things to get implemented and stuff. It's purely just because businesses aren't like the main focus. There's other things that need to be do, uh, done within city and stuff like that, so. It, it's hard, but like if you've got the patience, you'll eventually get, you know, it'll eventually all be done and you've got what you want and hopefully it'll be everything that you want it to be. I imagine Diego's over the moon with Benny's. See? Look how happy he is over there.
Oh, I'm asleep.
Exactly.
I'm not gonna lie, so am I.
Yeah, well.
I'm definitely gonna be there next week, yeah. Yeah, no, the, uh, the business.
Why is Middleton calling me?
Business plans that we're looking to in about two days and, uh, definitely be sorted, one way or another.
Uh, Chris, I'm creating a meeting, mate, can I get back in a bit?
Tell him to fuck off from blood.
I'm in a meeting, bro, I'll get back in a bit, alright?
If I can move on from businesses, uh, business plans, I'd like to, uh, bring up taxes. Believe it or not.
Of course you would.
Fuck, I'm in.
I, I wanna ask.
He's, he's literally tax evading right now, get him, Rob.
Thanks, mate.
I wanna ask some opinions, uh, purely on what, I mean, I don't really have a set number of what the tax rate would be at this time, and I'm not sure whether that's what I should bring up with the city council or someone else. So just think of like, and whether it should be on a certain day the taxes should be on, rather than, you know, the day that you got your license per se. So I'm thinking like. Go. Well done. Uh, I'm thinking maybe like tax day should be like the twentieth of every month and then, you know, go from there, everyone pays.
Just by default.
Yeah, yeah. But I, I'm not sure what the tax rate should be.
Would it be each purchase? Would it be different for each business?
Say that again, sorry?
So, um, I'm from each per, uh, purchase that you make is thirteen percent.
Yeah.
And then if you own a business, you pay that thirteen percent and another tax percent because you own a business.
I think taxes are purely just gonna be on profits.
I mean, just, 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 just thinking out, thinking out loud here, what if you made a document that we could all put our weekly earnings into?
Yeah.
So every Friday, so every Friday I'll pay my employees a certain amount and I could put an amount in that I've paid them kind of thing, what I've made.
Yeah.
And then that could make a calculation as to what tax I owe you.
Yeah.
Cause then that, that then gives a chance for someone to be a bit naughty, like obviously maybe not do some, that, I don't know, that is a bit more into it, you know?
Yeah.
The only thing with that is it needs to be private. You should not be able to see Benny's and vice versa, et cetera.
Of course not, of course not, yeah, of course not.
Yeah, don't go to me and then other people, like you guys won't be able to see each others, but I'll be able to see everyone's.
Yeah, I want to say, for instance, like Benny's has their own document that writes down all their upgrades and I'm pretty sure Redline has theirs, PDM has theirs. I don't know what Isaac's doing with Best Buds if they have a spreadsheet which shows.
You have a spreadsheet. Um, what I do is is I, any earnings is half, half towards their store and half towards the employer. Suppliers get ten K per distribute and employment, uh, employees get temp, uh, ten K on Fridays.
The fuck, you owe me money then?
If Nova has access to them to see what we're making through the weeks, he can determine the value of the week.
So we could add him into our Discord channel as a governor and he could see what we're doing, yeah? Let's go shop.
Well, would it be Nova or is Nova gonna hire a taxman?
I reckon it's gonna be me. I reckon it's gonna be me. Yeah, definitely gonna be me.
Please don't be Oliver, he's already in everybody's shit.
Do you, could Jay like get involved in that maybe? Like, if he wants to?
Who? 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 Where are another?
Mr. Redford?
Oh, Jay.
Because I mean, that, that, that would be pretty good for him, I think, you know, to have like.
Something to do.
I don't know.
Tax collector.
She's a lawyer, not an accountant.
Yeah, but there's a difference between an accountant and a tax collector.
Can you give me your best threatening voice, please, Jay?
I think a lawyer's got a better chance being a tax collector than that guy does.
Why don't, why don't blood, why don't blood becomes the, uh, tax collector?
What? Are you mad?
Blood the taxman. Oh, fuck, yeah. If you don't pay the tax, I'd love to see him roll up with a bat.
Why are you saying no, Charlie? Are you scared of him?
Who is, who is needed for this role?
Cause, come back and punch document. You owe taxes this March, pay me or get killed.
I think, no, I think you'll find, I know a guy who loves making spreadsheets as a hobby. It'll be cleaner than you've ever fucking seen.
Okay, I might have to give you a shout, cause I need help with mine.
No, I'm, I'm genuine, I got a guy, he, 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 he squeezes over the fucking choice of doing them, mate.
Nathan?
Yeah, there's Nathan. Yeah, he loves them. Fucking loves them.
I don't think, you, you, you can.
Hello, mate.
Every week, we, we put our, our income in, our profits and, you know, but then we have to pay our taxes, you know?
Yeah.
I thought, I thought that's pretty cool.
No, yeah, I'm, I'm definitely down for an idea like that. Um, could definitely, uh, work at least, but, um, I'm still torn on what the tax rate should be. I, I don't know. Um, I don't wanna put it too high and have everyone come after me. And I also don't wanna put it too low.
At the start, it will need to be flexible because
Okay.
Your, the, the tax comes from, we'll have to cover EMS, PD, you know, it's meant to cover all the wages there, plus the stuff like the retainers, the DA and.
So seventy percent is what I'm putting forward.
Oh god, fuck that.
I'm joking, fuck it off.
I, I, I changed my register to ten percent today. Um.
Congrats.
So, I don't know if that's a good number for everybody else.
I think ten percent's too low.
I mean, ten percent, hmm. You could start it low and maybe build it higher, I don't know.
I have to think about it. I, I'm thinking of putting it on a set day anyway, I'll, uh.
Let, let, let me be, let me see what, give me two seconds.
Like, like was mentioned earlier as well though, um, obviously taxes needed, but people who buy businesses, they don't, they're not free. Some of them cost three hundred to four, five hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And businesses like, for example, business, uh, Victor's future business, he's not gonna be making a lot of money off of that. I think taxes need to be very individual.
So it's something that needs to be discussed. It's something that needs to be discussed at the time of the business opening.
Should be a percentage of the.
So I mean, the best thing, the best thing to do is go around to each individual business and work out with them. It won't, it won't take too long.
Yeah, cause having the same percentage tax for Redline and having the same percentage tax for a little restaurant on the pier. Yeah.
Yeah, but that percent is relevant to what I make. And if he, if he makes ten grand, twenty percent, where you be?
The more I earn, the more that I pay.
It's a percentage on the profits, so.
Yeah.
If, if, if you guys wouldn't, wouldn't know, just out of interest, so what I've made since, so, so what we've done is made since Friday is a hundred and fifty two thousand.
Huh.
And that, so, 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 so that's what we've taken in.
Chump change. So that's your revenue. So what, what's your?
No, that's, I think it's actual, I think it's profit, two secs.
So you, your tax for this week would have been fifteen grand.
Which, excuse me, it's nothing really, right? And I've still got another five weeks to, 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 do, you know?
How many employees do you have though?
I, I think that's kind of fair, no? Like, fifty grand, nothing, like.
Compared to what smaller ones make.
It, it's nothing if you have three employees, it's something if you have fifteen.
Or, or, or that, that's down to the employer, not, not, that, that's down to who you employ.
Or they'll lose their jobs, like.
It, it's, it's, it's true, it's true, that, yeah, but it's true.
I'm not, I'm not saying it like that. I'm, I'm saying, nevermind.
You can't afford your employees, well, you need to figure out something.
There's bus, again, there's businesses who can, that can be managed with two people, like Best Buds. And then there's businesses like Redline who need five people to run it. There needs to be people around to repair cars.
It's not PDM, well, you have the salesman there, but like, the more people you have that you employ, the more money you make, because the more people you pay, you know?
Selling my shares at Best Buds, taking offers.
I'll pay you twenty grand.
Sorry, you're eight.
Well, if I'm only allowed to have one fucking leadership job, then I fucking have to, don't I?
You can drop down to being an employee there, though.
Well, just because you're an owner doesn't mean you're a manager. You can still be an owner and not a manager.
Hunter, we 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 respect Hunter, yeah, you have no employees, you have no employees, I have likes, like five, Dick has like seventeen. Okay, ten, like, do you know what I mean, like, so you should employ people to actually get involved, you know?
But see, the whole point with uh like take imports for instance.
Contact you for tyres for time, my brother.
Ever again, please. Please, it's like, make me done again, fucking hell, my brother.
Only owners can do tyres, and that's just how it is, uh. Not saying I hate the idea of having the lower staff also do tyres.
The lower tax bracket.
So Hunter, I respect, I I don't respect, so so who do you employ?
I got Justin, uh whatever his fucking name is, Steel?
Justin Steele, so the the ex-owner of PDM.
Probably.
It still works at PDM, Bennys and now.
You only have one employee.
Well, it's like, it's like this, yeah. I caught fire people. There's not, there's not people buying imports every day, you know what I mean, like, I I don't think.
Very specific.
Yeah, exactly, I don't think I need anymore.
They definitely used to annoy me with imports, he's like, you used to have four people that would work at the import shop, they'd fly in, the night the imports come in, sold their cars and you wouldn't see them again for a month.
Exactly.
People like Justin, Respect will be around and he will put the work in and 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 he and he he will be around.
But he's hired.
But 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 can he sell cars yet or not?
Yeah.
He can sell cars now?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Also put the tyre thing, why, why only you?
I I don't know, yeah.
Yeah, but do you do you mean why only him as in as in luxury or not Redline or PDM?
No, 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 why why is his?
He literally cannot see it in the menu unless he is owner of this business.
Oh, didn't that, I mean.
That 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 makes sense, that makes sense, yeah, you need to get it changed.
Yeah.
Um.
That's probably one of the uh overall, like, that's gonna be the most thing you're gonna get overall, I mean.
Yeah, I mean.
Somebody's gonna know that those import tyres are gonna wanna get some new ones, I mean. You're not gonna get someone coming in getting a car every day.
Yeah, exactly, that is honestly what, on a weekly basis, tyres is the one thing that makes money, really.
Yeah.
Hmm, yeah, but yeah, but you you might have one lot of influx where you sold four cars, you make fucking bank off a night, do you know what I mean? So like, it it kind of, it's like Redline will be consistently sort of making decent money, but there won't ever be a boom, like unless there's imports in.
PDM golf.
You say, you say, you say make bank, right, but take a, take a fucking five hundred thousand dollar car, I make twenty, I make ten percent of that.
I thought you made twenty.
So what's that, what's that?
Yeah, but I only take fucking ten out of it.
Oh, I go, what, and the rest goes in like your, whatever it is, bank account money, whatever.
If you had ten people working there that sold one car a day, not one car a week, sorry, that's ten cars. Yeah, but who the fuck is gonna buy ten cars?
And someone. I could cut down, I guess.
Guys wanna buy cars, you wanna go buy imports right now, we can get you fucking sorted. To put it in a business point of view, I have ten people working at PDM, I recommend a lot of money because they're selling cars.
Because your cars are literally forty thousand dollars.
Right?
And and he makes ten percent of that, every car he sells.
I'm in the same boat as you, but I'm thinking about.
To be fair, me, Hunter, they're going same boat, come on, thing.
In the city, hence why I employed a lot of people, if you're never in the city, no one's buying cars.
I'm literally every day in the city.
Hmm.
Have you put an advertisement out?
I'm agreeing, I'm all sides here, cause.
Yeah.
There definitely should be advertisements showing that you're available, showing that you're busy, your business is booming.
Word of talk and shit like that, yeah.
Not everybody's gonna buy a big fricking car like that all the time.
Why don't you guys set up like a?
Some of the big cars all the time.
Why don't you guys set up like a referral program? Like, the other day, I I was very confused when I looked at Twitter, um I know it was just a bit of banter between you boys. But a bit of banter can be seen very differently in the eyes of civilians, uh you guys are saying like fuck Redline, this, that and the other.
I was I was not awake for that shit by the way, so yeah.
Yeah, it went. You guys are supposed to be friends, like. I I believe it used to be that one business had twenty five percent off and then the other business did repair kits.
So that's a chat I wanna have with Pixel separately, with me, Pixel and Nova and Mac, so that's something we're gonna do separately out of here, but yeah.
Be me.
Yeah.
Uh between me and Pixel, not between me and you, mate, with respect.
The business.
Yeah, but I'll talk to Pixel about it.
I'll be there for the meeting.
I don't think you will.
Okay, guys, stop, I can cut the tension here with a knife.
Guys, like, really?
Cut you with a.
Um, I I'd like to say something about the import cars, uh.
What's that?
It kind of sounds stupid, but uh city law about using import cars during crimes. It's getting to the point where the cars are fucking dumb, way too fast. And people are stealing them from people to use them in a crime on purpose because they know they can get away in two turns. And.
I agree, I agree.
And people are also buying them or maybe taking them out for rentals and getting them and then using them in a job.
That is something I'm seeing a lot, is PDM taking out rentals and then just using them all day. Crime, all sorts.
Yeah.
Man, who, I mean, apart from the crime, like, but who'd do that?
It used to be that you had, even to take out a test drive, you had, you had to show your ID, and if it was ever reported in a crime. PD would come to you, um so yeah, PD would come to PDM and say, has this car been involved in any crime? And PD would say, well, yeah, we gave that rentals to X, Y and Z.
That should be set up.
PD come to me once about rental and I didn't have any.
Do you honestly take IDs for test drives?
You state the fact that PD are having this issue, why have they never come to me before?
I'm not saying it's just PD, I'm saying like, it used to be a thing where. PDM would take people's ID identification when giving out a test drive.
But.
I haven't seen that happen in a long time.
If I would have been doing that in the past, that PD have never come to me with the issue.
I've just recently.
There's something that they can pass the message over, that they should do that, if anything were to happen.
Just saying that it should happen.
Just in case that's not, like, they don't know whose car it is and if they can tell, it's probably a rental. I mean.
Yeah, banks voiced an issue and I just was trying to come up with a solution, I wasn't attacking you in any way.
Yeah.
Completely got off track, what was Banks' question again, sorry?
Banks' question was about import cars and.
About citywide law about people using import cars for crime.
Well.
Don't mean like a law that I can charge people with, like a crime, I mean like a city law.
My personal opinion is that that would probably be bad. Uh mostly because then then people would not wanna buy those cars, who's like, yeah, they're they're fucking good, right, but what are you gonna use them for if you can't, you know?
I think if it's a nice car, you don't have to buy it just to use it for a crime.
Doing is actually reporting that vehicles are stolen and if they don't, that's their problem if if you guys seize it for a large sum. I mean, you have seizure things for a reason, don't you?
But I have reported my car being stolen multiple times, they don't get back to me, nothing.
I mean, if they don't get back to you, I mean, with respect, so.
The other day, my folks were stolen and Middleton called me, he's like, mate, your car has been used in a bank robbery, this, the registration, this is the fault of it, all that kind of thing, don't think about it, and I was like, no. And I thought that was class, cause he actually saw it was my car, ran the plate, called me, he's like, your car's been nicked, like, I think that was sick, like, I proper enjoyed that.
Right.
But even for the cars, like Jay just said, PDM workers just give out um cars for test drives.
Which is wrong, yeah.
Never, uh I mean, they can, I'm not saying they shouldn't give out cars for test drives, but take people's details, so if it does come back from a robbery.
Maybe, maybe you take their licence, but just just show it, maybe you actually grab the licence like as in your pockets.
So they have to come back.
Yeah, like it's a token they leave behind.
Yeah, I guess.
That's not bad.
Then when they bring the car back on scratch.
Then you get, then you get it back, you get it back to them, that could work.
That could be a fine, we could hand out to people that don't bring test drive back.
Yeah, perfect.
Bring it back, so if you just hand your driver's licence, you just come here for fifty bucks and get a new one.
Yeah.
However much it is.
You can hand it in.
Or a lot of the time, um when you do things like uh when you use. Someone's facilities, um you have to leave behind like a.
Yeah.
Uh like a token, like something of worth, so you pay two fifty, uh so two K to test drive the car. They bring the car back, they get the two K back.
Shot, that's a good shot.
If they don't bring the car back, you keep the two K.
I'd say a five K, fifty K, fuck it.
And that that that's actually a good shot, because then if they bring it back, you've got money, like, that's actually a good, I like that idea.
Two K and then. Even collateral on a fucking test drive is normal.
Could just be a percentage of the car value.
Yeah, man.
Yeah.
Yeah, five, five percent of the car you could do.
Yeah, and they have to bring it back in mint condition.
But they're like, yeah, and you can keep their licence and put it in a spreadsheet, who it was, what car, what time, and then if there's an issue.
And the 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 version of the car as well, sorry, I was like, yeah.
You too, Hunter, you can do that for luxury imports.
Comes to you, you can be like, oh, it's this person, this person, and I have their licence.
I have to go with them, cause if I don't, I can't return it, so they just sit in the fucking store.
I mean, fuck, I'd like, mate, I'd fucking help you out in case what you're talking about.
Halfway through, if you if you take collateral, put it in the fucking ATM and then they kick you out halfway through, at least you've got their money and their. I ID, and then you know it, you know what I mean? It's protecting your business at the same time as protecting your cars.
If you feel like the ID is fake or anything like that, you can still report it to PD.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, otherwise the insurance is gonna shaft you.
Moving back on to the imports using in crime, what vehicle seizure, like stuff do you have? Do you have, if they use it in a crime X amount of time, that you can fully take it, you know?
Crush it? Um, yeah, we do.
Crush it or auction it or whatever, I don't know.
Ooh, auction would be good. Uh if it's a misdemeanor charge and it's its first offence, it's just an impound, second offence, so on and so forth and a bit more.
Auctions are always fun.
Um if it's used in a felony, like a store robbery or shooting. Uh we seize the vehicle and the charge was up and then so on, every single offence after that, it gets held for longer.
Hmm.
Uh if it's its fourth offence as a violent felony charge, it is a full seizure and we keep the vehicle. Then it can be put up for auction.
You know, you know what we could do, right? If um if it gets to a point where like, use CGF as an example, cause they always use the same fucking vehicles, right? Let's say you see see CGF's car and then one of their friends comes and buys it back from an auction. You know what we could do? That money from auction could go to the PD or the EMS to pay for their lawyers on retainer.
Yep.
Like, we could do something like that, we could, you 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 know, speak speak to so some of the construction workers and architects. See if they can get a fucking, you know, safe shifted in, and when a when a car sells at auction, they say it goes for a hundred grand. Fifty grand goes to PD, fifty grand goes to EMS, and then they can use that to pay for lawsuits, lawyer retainers and whatnot.
And promotions and stuff.
PD, I believe that it's safe, EMS doesn't, yeah, maybe that's something that we can get put in.
Yeah, and that's what I said about speaking to construction and um, you know, architects and that, but but that 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 that's an idea, you know, you 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 risk. It's the reality of a crime, you re- you risk everything you own, you're not just going to prison, you're throwing away everything.
Onto uh the EMS and PD saves, it's possible when someone gets paid with their cheque. Possible, we don't see the money, but some money like five dollars goes towards the safe that which job you have. So say if I'm EMS, that I'm on duty, every time I get paid, I still get my six twenty five. And five dollars goes towards the safe, so it builds over time as many people as is on duty.
It's plausible, so an income tax, yeah.
Typically, yeah, so anybody, like, because we all work in our businesses and stuff like that. We all need to pay taxes when we get paid, but that money should go towards the safe to pay for the tax.
Yeah, so so rather rather than paying straight out of pocket, over time, this will just generate and build up anyway, wouldn't it? You know what I mean? If it's a direct debit into a, into a money.
And then that money, yeah.
I fucks with it.
We don't need to see the money that's being taken out, we we'll just see our normal cheque, it's just money being generated to support little things and the number can be small, like three dollars.
Paid, if you're paid six or eight hundred on your salary, you can knock off even a hundred of that. Straight into the safe and when, you know, once there's a full team, you've got, let's say. A full team of six people doing that on your salaries, it's gonna build up pretty quick, innit, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, at least the five dollars, three dollars, ten dollars, ten dollars. I mean, just a low amount and people won't be bothered, people won't even see it. It's quiet.
I have nothing to add.
Makes sense, makes sense, I agree.
I don't necessarily agree, but.
Come.
Why don't you?
I don't think it's needed.
Money in the tomb pocket.
Yeah.
Where's this money coming from?
Yeah, yeah, that, you know, if PDM did that, it's it's PDM taxing their own people to work there. Which, which is weird.
Yeah, I don't know about that.
They get paid on what they've sold, if they sell nothing, they get paid nothing.
I think his idea was more for EMS and shit.
And like EMS and.
That's 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 what he said when he first opened the whole thing.
Yeah, but if we are taxing businesses and the stuff like the the bills from crime all goes into a pot, the government pot. I I'm not sure we need to, you know, if we're gonna do an income tax, do it with everyone and it doesn't go into an EMS safe or a PD safe, it goes into the government kitty.
That's something that needs to be worked on, is every time we find someone, that money goes nowhere.
Yeah.
And when we pack ourselves, our 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 bills and for losses or saline bags.
Do you not have a vault?
We we have a vault, but nothing gets put into it.
Oh.
And every time we find someone.
There, there was always the talk of how dangerous. There's always talk of how dangerous it could be about cops overfining people just to get more money put into the safe. And eventually get that money paid back.
But it wouldn't be paid to cops, I mean, the cops have their salaries. Wouldn't even be paid paid to anyone.
The vault can be locked behind the chief, it's that easy.
Yeah.
Um, and with patients, we, they can, you know, some money can go towards our vault as EMS. And nobody can see it, you know what I mean?
Hmm.
The small businesses, they can, they can put money towards for taxes and stuff like that, or like billing for EMS, PD and. Governmental jobs.
Stop dabbing.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Not that this hasn't been fun either, but it's almost been two hours and my.
Yeah, well, welcome to City Council, motherfucker.
That's right.
I'm hungry.
Eat then, I'm sure someone will hear it.
I'm robbed.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
I'm going.
Um.
Yeah, I'm gonna get the fuck out of here, see you later. Fuck, I thought it was gonna be a bit of a reluctance, please don't go, Connor.
Oh no, bloke, don't go, please.
Alright, I'll stay, I'll stay.
But I don't know, is anything else to be discussed, I mean, I think we've covered.
Ah, we're done here, mate, fuck off. Jay, I love you, I'll see you around.
Anything to say?
Meeting is adjourned.
Hi.
So, can we just go from what we've come tonight and what we've agreed with and?
Jay, Jay's got a point.
No, have you been doing this all down?
I have been, yes. So have I, surprisingly.
But what's budget?
Yeah, me too.
Jay said, when's the next meeting? Uh. Should we do these weekly?
I mean, we're we're all in um in the chain thing now, right?
Biweekly, yeah, biweekly.
Biweekly.
I'm not bi.
Shut up.
You should try it, man.
I'll change it, I'll change it.
Do it biweekly.
Is that right, Charlie?
Jesus Christ. Alright, alright.
Has this chain rings out? Coming to what we've agreed, because like, I I again, I think we should announce this to the people of Los Santos as a government, as a council, you know?
So.
Oh.
We we've obviously agreed that uh.
Jobs, jobs are maxed too.
Yeah, so, I mean.
I think we have a perfect opportunity here, you know who's gonna announce it? The radio station.
Yeah.
Can you vote on him?
That's actually a great idea.
I agree.
He's the newest channel.
Fantastic idea, get get watched on, that's a fucking brilliant idea.
That's exactly how it does.
So that's why I wanted him in the council so he can jot down everything and tell everybody.
Yeah.
But would you really have?
News reporter.
Technically, he's not, he's not a, he's not a representative, he's more of a business owner. Um we kinda just relay the message notes.
Well, yeah, cause he's a live, it's 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 a, it's just a radio station.
So me personally, we'd all talk in, I would go and make a statement to Rusty, Rusty would release it, you know?
Well, no, Rusty doesn't need to release it, Nova can be a guest on his show, and announce it yourself, he's a fucking journalist.
I personally think a big event with Nova leading it.
Fuck your desk.
Nova sort of being like, announced as governor, Arsenal behind him as council, you know, these are your council, this is your governor, this is what we've done. Come to us if you have any problems, I think that'd be brilliant, I think.
Would that be possible for?
Represent something and Rusty represents uh news and radio and stuff like that, so it's.
Yeah, yeah.
My problem. So, you are right in that, for instance.
Like, we all represent something and I think we need ready uh Rusty as radio information.
Rusty could then play it as the way he does things, and he could, uh, publish things without it being fully agree on first, you know?
I, I, I don't think, but he, I don't think, but he, he should be involved in this council, I think he should get separate, but I think he should be the one we go to to release information, you know what I mean?
Yeah, to get it to the people.
We should involve him, but not to that extent. Um, it wouldn't be possible for Rusty to get a text channel and an email thing?
I imagine that could be.
Like, in the main one, saying, like, uh, Rusty's news.
Yes, they do like articles and shit there.
Then it can be a way for the stuff that's in the city to be broadcast.
I mean, we have Weasel News as well, too. I don't know if.
Rusty's news is pretty much Weasel's news, it's the same thing, Isaac, I think, is it not? It's what he's doing, I saw him running around with a camera and a trench coat earlier.
Weasel News operates a website as well.
There is a reporter.
I saw him running around with a camera and this trench coat, taking pictures of this shit.
Such a nice guy, Rusty, such a nice guy.
It was so funny.
Another reporter named Ben, Benjamin?
Call myself out early, I need to go, so.
Yeah.
It's important.
Oh, fuck, fuck, fuck.
Love you.
I need food as well.
Jay, I'll see you in the bedroom.
Jesus Christ.
Oh, god.
Okay.
I'd check every, check the room before you go to bed, mate, all right?
Are we good then?
Governor, any, any comments, any ideas, or anything, feedback at all, or?
Uh, no, I've, I've enjoyed everything that we spoke about, I think we got through a lot of things, um, as, as I say, I think we're gonna do this bi-weekly, um, as Charlie said before as well. Uh, just because, you know, leave a bit of time between each, each meeting, so people can, you know, think about things, actually be asked things from citizens.
I mean, if there's individual things that are super urgent that need to be discussed, there's always other ways that we can get it done, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Plus if we're gonna.
Other than that, we don't need one every single week.
Oh, that, that does remind me, thank you. Um. So Aaron Gumm is the Chief of Police, he, he handed his badge in, he took it back, but if the Chief of Police or the Chief of EMS resigns.
Yeah.
That should be on the council to decide the next, uh, representative.
That should be dangerous.
Ah.
Really? What do you think of that?
I think if it's done correctly, it could be very good.
Well.
Basically, they're automatically gonna assume that the O two is gonna go up, right?
You can also, if there's a chief, like, with that being said respectfully, but like, if there is an issue with one of the chiefs. And DOJ or a judge would have to, if we, if someone makes enough complaints or whatnot, we can choose if we still want them to represent as chief in that department.
What, maybe what we can do is give approval, so they can appoint a new chief, but it has to come through us first, we give, check their background, their like, their reports. That they've been doing, and how good they are as natural cop, whether we think they're capable to run a department.
Me, I, I suppose that that would come through your, like, so if it's EMS for instance, and there's Lexi stands down, she'd give a recommendation as to who she thinks would be next, we'd sit down, interview her, go for that kind of thing, and then.
Yeah.
I suppose then they, I suppose it starts to the governor to choose, but because to give us hi- his counsel and go from there, you know?
May. I choose may.
Thing is, is not everybody knows what EMS takes, not everyone knows what DOJ takes, or.
Yeah, I agree.
That's why it'd be a council.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly.
Because obviously, PD, they obviously think they know what makes a good cop, but for example, you could have a completely different opinion on what makes a good cop, Isaac. Who would make it good.
We could have.
You'd have the council as a meat.
I agree, I agree.
Yeah, sometimes you need to step away from the mirror, you know, and actually look at it from something like this.
We could genuinely, we could go in a big, uh, conference room and have them perform. Choose best for the job would be great.
Also, mention if there is complaints with any chiefs of any district, bring them up to us.
Yeah.
Um.
Um. Because it, it, so for example, if it's the Chief of Police, none of us can really investigate it. It, it would certainly be investigated and then the report given to us.
We would have to hire a private investigator.
I do that part-time.
That's something we would can walk away with.
If there's a report, uh, someone's putting in a complaint about Gumm, I can't look into it.
That, that's, I think it, if there's an IA department, then it'll be IA.
Mm-hmm.
And then IA would bring the, ask the report and make a recommendation.
Could CID not do it?
It's criminal investigation district, isn't it?
Criminal Investigation Department.
I don't know.
And who, who's made the reports on the cop you recently fired?
I heard a cop?
Uh, yeah, Connor Jackson got a dismissal from PD.
Connor Jackson. I wonder why he was such a good car?
You're an idiot.
That's such a shame.
This is our governor.
He's being sarcastic, Isaac.
Thanks, bud. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, it was made by another officer, um, caught him being.
Connor Jackson, basically.
Caught him being corrupt, uh, as well as not abiding by SOPs.
So, beat Connor Jackson.
You know, he asked me to kill two cops, this is Fava, when I, uh, asked her as well. Which I didn't, I wanna point, I did not.
Then you guys did a good job, Rob, so.
So I got a letter of intent, um, Chris Roy helped for me, and then we sent off to the judge, and he approved it, and we got him fired from PD.
Now, can we do that with the chiefs?
Who the hell are we talking about? Connor Jackson, you said?
Mm-hmm, Park Ranger.
Okay.
Can I judge?
Middleton?
Wait, did you have to get a judge to sign off firing an officer?
Uh, yeah.
But I mean, uh, Middleton is a little bit close to line.
Because he, he also, he also got sent to jail. There was obstruction, there was corruption, uh, few other charges.
So, yeah, I'm not too familiar with all these officers, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
That's a good thing.
I look the same.
You stay on the straight now, all right, buddy?
That's right.
Good shit, good shit.
So, we submit the proof to the judge, and you went ahead with it.
Or then you got supposed to, Jerry, or?
I would have thought it would all be internal, unless it fits someone in high command.
He was just, he was just a corporal. Hmm, not high command.
Yeah, I, I, I wouldn't surprise you would need to go through a judge to fire him.
Uh, I, I was just told to do that by the chief, so.
So couldn't Command just decide on that?
Yeah, that's what I would have thought, but.[1738.13]